Here. To start the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, our nation, our empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will start the September second meeting. Approval of minutes from August the eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second all the favor.
Bye.
Approval minutes from the July twenty-third meeting. Make a motion.
That was the joint meeting that you guys had with the town council. I don't know if you were.
You were there.
So we can just postpone.
Yeah.
Brian.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah, we'll table that. Approval claims.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second all the favor.
Bye.
Dusty, you're up.
We've been on the roadside, trimming tree limbs back. They've been doing slip repair on Bodie Hill, vessel ridge, and Cersei's Ridge. We're trying to figure out what to do on chip and seal. So hilltop still hasn't ran fresh for a rock yet. I really need to switch over and install the seal. I'll make a decision.
Two or two.
Well, crush dates they call them.
Somewhere.
Not right now. Hide the birds out. There you go. And I like using the hilltop rock. It's a lot harder than the limestone. Hump can, if you hear, it'll last a while. We've had two different states that they were supposed to be done, and they keep pushing back, so. We may have to end up switching over and at least get my property done. I want to get out there and see what we can get out of that. Because we want to get the line striking thing before it gets too much colder.
How many miles or?
We're liking about five miles. About thousand tons. We had a follow-up meeting with FEMA on eight twenty-five. All projects have been submitted and they're reviewing them. And then also fall cleanup. Want to see if you always want to do that this year as well. Last year we had it October eleventh through thirteenth, so.
How many you got bins to be doing in spring?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, so. We used to do eight, and I think it backed off seven.
Do you remember? Seven.
You remember, Jenny? I think it was around seven or something.
Yeah, seven thousand.
Of course, the scrap dumpster, it usually pays for. Basically.
Six. What days? So ten through the thirteenth, or eleven through the?
Yeah, well, that's if that's the.
You want to do it Friday, Saturday, Sundays?
Yeah, the tenth is a Friday.
Yeah, ten, eleven, twelve.
I'm making a motion to approve. The purchase of seven dumpsters for fall cleanup for the days of October the tenth through twelve.
Second, all the favor.
Bye.
All this business. With survey. Does this need to go to?
He made each of you.
I'll have to refresh my memory because we've got two or three of these, right? But they're both in the same.
Sir.
To what level, Dusty, is this consistent with the? One from your last meeting? Because they wanted to vacate a road that was never established, and this is. Actually, a road that was never established, right?
Yes, well, no, the. The previous one, the road was getting pretty problematic. Still.
That was Miller's.
Yeah, you know.
But that was the lady, right?
Yeah.
Right. And last meeting, weren't there someone else?
No, that was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So this is still the same portion he's talking about. This here was never actually developed.
The boat.
Yeah. It was never developed when evidently the county took over the plot up there. That was never developed. And there is also some road.
This is turned over to us.
It was turned over to us, but. But there was never a road there at the beginning, was there? There was never a road turned over to us, is my understanding.
Yeah, and then I went to Mark, and Mark said I have to stay fifty feet off. Upper Goose Creek, and then ten feet from the easement where I want to put something. It leaves me about twelve feet.
So I think.
What's being requested? What's being requested?
Today.
So the request is to vacate a portion of what on this map is called North Drive. North Drive was never. This portion of North Drive was never.
Never established.
Established. And the county took over this entire, all the roads or streets, if you will, in this subdivision. So I'm not sure, Garrett, how we. How we handle. Vacating something that was never really there.
Is it on our books? Was there anything that brought it into our current?
No. It was never developed or maintained as far as I know.
And we have no action bringing it in? Why do you think it's county maintained right now?
No, he doesn't. Yeah, it's not. It's just.
It just says it.
Um.
No, it was part of the original team.
Original right away. Some county commissioners back in the sixties developed Ohio River. Ohio River land development, which out of that, they planted all these streets in the true subdivision form in like many blocks. There'd be some blocks in that. Of which, some of those were never developed. They planted, never constructed on. In this case, he had purchased some adjoining lots out of two different blocks. And by the virtue of that, there's an abandoned roadway that runs through that on paper. The county has never. Yes, it's filed in that cabinet record. It's actually subdivision book one, page one. It's the very first subdivision.
So it is on our books.
It is. Right, so it was done as a street. Now, North Drive is constructed in certain areas that kind of go around this. This particular block that he owns is still undeveloped. When he goes to get a building permit, technically. Because of the minimum setbacks, he can't build the building where he wants in Mr. Archer's standpoint because it's too close to the road front.
Does anyone else have land that touches this particular area?
So on the north side, the overall development is now hilltop.
So since this is.
Well, this side is. Yeah, hilltop would touch up on the north side, right in here. Now, by virtue of these lot numbers here, and these lot numbers in here, he would own all of this by recent purchase. So what he is trying to do is, is when you get to this area, it is paved street. This is a paved road that goes all the way around. Actually, North Drive is taken up to this point here. This is where the existing house is at.
If we already have the right of way here, generally what we need is a petition to vacate and notice to all the adjoining lands. So that's the next step that we need to be taking. Have you put in any petition or anything yet?
No, I don't even have to do that. I mean.
I can talk to Dusty about that. So since it's on our books, we need a petition to vacate and then notice to whoever is an adjoining landowner.
Yeah.
And then these guys can have a hearing, and then we can formally vacate.
Okay.
We got further tonight.
Yeah.
There's a lot in here. Do you have any? No. Do you? He showed us next year. Yeah. Yeah, just email me. I'll respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Here's your stuff. The John Welch. The John Welch.
That's one that I could email to you about the horse.
Oh, the horse. So that, yeah, I was going to ask what the deal was with that. So Gail had mentioned it to me, but. So there's a problem we have that we want to fix. Or basically they're not being enforced.
Well, we don't currently have.
Any.
Oh, poop bag ordinance. We have a license plate ordinance that isn't.
Who was the county that you said did have? Didn't you guys say?
Somebody in here said, maybe it was Ryan that said.
So.
Ryan loves the.
House family. Yeah, and there's a lot of folks, you know, that would have horses up in the northern. It used to been. So you want an ordinance to address a poop bag, poop bag. Make sure that it doesn't just get dropped along the road, and then, and then you. Who is normally, who is assigned to enforce the?
Sheriff. More enforcement, but.
Have we had any discussions with them? Because we also want to make sure if we're going to do it, it's enforced, or there's some discussion of that.
So I guess that's, that's kind of been my hangup here. I mean, I've had a lot of complaints, but I've not pursued. The poop bag, maneuver bag, whatever. Because if we're not going to enforce the license plate ordinance. If a buggy doesn't. Like slash horse doesn't have a license plate, then how do we know that's whose it even is, for one, right? Unless we're going to write a citation and find on the scene, but I don't think that's realistic, right?
Well, I can, I can work something up, and then I can talk to the sheriff and see if he, what he does with these. But from your standpoint, nothing's been enforced recently on just the last.
I'll just tell you what the sheriff told me on two occasions when I approached him. He said, can you imagine the optics of me having a horse and buggy pulled over? My response was, I don't really care about the optics. You know, we have the ordinance. It's our, what we're supposed to be doing. So that's the extent of. And, and he knows, that's what he says, so he's not going to have a problem if we repeat this, so.
You got to work on that. So we just want some, some device that we can enforce the collection as they're going down.
Correct.
Never thought you'd be dealing with that.
So if you remember, we came here a couple of meetings ago, and talked about. What it would take to get an OKRA grant for OKRA money, which is ten percent match. And what would have to happen would be the income survey. Regional planning will do that. For no fee because they're already part of, we're already paying for them for that kind of stuff. The cost of the county will be the mailings. A few thousand dollars, maybe two thousand dollars. To mail stuff out for all the counties. Any of the money that comes from off community rules fair, they will require that. That, you know, if you do the income survey. You're, you're eligible for applying for, for money for a lot of different things. So. The income survey, the reason, the county, the OKRA requires it. Our survey results were done during the cen- during the census. It was emailed. It. Did not reflect the real poverty rate in the county. Because the poor people didn't have, you know, they weren't online anyways, and. So, and if you take into account the school lunch, the rate of people who get, you know, reduced lunches and everything, it's, it's pretty well recognized that the county would be. Would qualify for the, for the grant. So then. At our last meeting, the planning zoning and PGA. We met with HWC in Newry, Newry. They're an outfit that Garrett found. They came. They presented to us what they did. They also confirmed that they were certain that. If we do the income survey, we will qualify. That would be good for, depending on. Population, the break even, it's just around where we are. It's either fifty or sixty thousand dollars, depending on how many people are in the county. At the time, and so the match would be ten percent of that. So we're looking at a cost to the county. Of somewhere, maybe six, seven thousand dollars. That's the match from OKRA for the fifty or sixty thousand dollars. Good news is they said that what they would do would include, you know, the whole process of. All the public outreach, all the meetings, all the, in, you know. And incorporating with the current book, with all the changes we want to make, having to do with. With blight, having to do with subdivision control, having to do with lot size, as well as maps. A new set of maps. Most outfits don't do both. They do, and the comprehensive plan, all of it.
Has HWC.
HWC, and the number they threw out was another fifty thousand dollars. So we're looking at a total cost of somewhere sixty, give or take. Which, from the last time we were looking.
Another fifty thousand. That's on top of if we get the grant.
If we get the grant.
So approximately a hundred thousand.
Right, with hopefully, with a grant.
Grant fifty and.
Right.
At that point, with the grant, county would be out fifty seven.
Right, yeah.
Didn't, didn't counsel society. Fifty thousand for the budget.
It hasn't been approved.
Yeah, but it said it works.
So really, it's just. Yeah, so basically, all we really have to do is if, if you're behind it, is let Cer- let, have Gail let Serpsey know that we want to move ahead with it. And they will tell us what the next steps are, and they did say, when Mary McCarty was here, she said that, you know, they will require some cooperation from people here in terms of developing. As comprehensive a list as possible of all the residential addresses in the county. Doesn't matter who lives there. It's just, they need to have a list so that then, then it's randomized mailing out there. So we would need to get the cooperation. Of people, say, who own lots of properties and stuff, and also we'd have to make sure that we weren't counting. Like, if we use nine one one and stuff, we would have to make sure we're not counting non-residences as residences, but that's just the nuts and bolts of it. So anyways, if, you know, so. I don't know whether some, you got to make a motion or something, or how that's handled, but that just.
Yeah, we have to make a motion. You know, I'm fine with that. I'd make a motion to two thousand dollars for the.
Income survey.
That's, that's with Serpsey.
Yeah. Fine, qualified for the Serpsey grant.
I second all the favor.
All right, well, we'll keep moving on. Thank.
Thanks, Garrett. He's the one that found this outfit. They're really professional. And they seem, you know.
You're good. Better, you're up.
Hello. I'm here tonight to see if I can get approval to refill the animal control officer position.
Well, the handbook's written on that in order to backfill any positions. And the intent, I think, or the purpose behind it, one of these included was if we happen to be in a situation where. We were over budget, then we might consider not building it. That was the intent behind it. So that's why everyone has to come. In order to backfill. I should approve the active position. I'll second your point of discussion. So you, you were. What is currently the salary for that position?
It was offers thirty to thirty-three thousand. I think it was at thirty-three thousand, around thirty, thirty-three thousand.
So what would be your intention as far as offer to someone? What would you impose that position at?
Same as what it was, seventeen, eighteen an hour.
Was there an increase for that position? Put in the budget?
I asked for one.
I, I have no problem with offering a position at the current. Level, but I think someone new coming in eight months into the year, should, if there's an increase included in the budget and is approved. I wouldn't make that increase.
Apply to them.
Or whatever. Applied. So. You want to make the motion amended or? You'll pay.
You made a motion this second.
Okay.
But he's saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So would it be something that you'd want Heather, after six months, maybe reevaluate? And they could do, you know, increase, a merit increase or something, or?
Well, if we do that, then we have to go back and amend our week on council back to. If we don't include anything in the salary ordinance or the budget, then council would have to go back in order for her to give some type of increase and amend, do the amended salary ordinance. I, I, like I said. I think what you actually put in the budget was like a five thousand increase, if I'm not mistaken.
I went from seventeen to twenty.
So three dollar an hour.
Right.
Which is six thousand, more than six thousand.
She asked forty-two.
Sorry.
Forty-two.
Yeah, that's nine thousand.
But it's at thirty-seven right now, but he wasn't making that much.
So what's currently approved for that position is the salary ordinance is thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Which adds.
The new budget request is for how much?
Forty-two.
Twenty-two, forty-two. Yeah.
Because that wasn't for the person, that was for the position itself.
Yeah, regardless. I would struggle with giving a three dollar an hour increase. If it was to get approved in the salary ordinance.
Or that could be a later discussion. I just wanted someone hired now.
I'm fine with, with. The thirty, whatever it is, seventeen.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, one twenty-eight is the annual. So that'd be seventeen to eighty-five an hour.
But I don't think they should get another three dollar raise after four bucks.
Four.
No. I understand that.
The problem is if it's approved in the salary ordinance, then it automatically goes.
Well, not necessarily. If it's approved at forty-two, it's still going to be up to her. She can put pay less if one is approved.
Yes. I would, I'll, I'll approve it if it's up to the commissioners, not up to.
Well.
Heather.
That's what I'm.
And it's not, and not saying that I don't think you'll do us right. Don't misunderstand me.
I'm not.
I, I just want to make sure that we don't turn around in four months to give a three hour, three dollar an hour increase.
Understood.
Unless, unless this person's done a wonderful job, and, and our part-time position's not helping to help, so. Then I'd probably okay with three dollars. So, anyway. Joe, you, you made a motion to approve seventeen in a second.
All the favor.
Bye.
Thank you. And can I get that posted tonight, or should I wait till tomorrow?
We can approve it.
Yeah.
Working on that. Thank you. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm going to pass along to Mary about the income survey for the cop plan and all that stuff, so. And so when I was here last, we opened up bids for the owner occupied rehab program. And we only had one bidder, and that's the first time I've had that happen with OKRA. So I reached out to them to see exactly what they would require us to do. And they said that since we mailed out the bid packets to all the contractors on our list, and we can show that we did that, then we do not have to get additional quotes. So I am recommending to you guys to approve the bids that we received last, the last meeting, if you want a copy of those. Yeah, and the one that he, that they didn't bid on, we will be redidding that house and. Yes, and I think the only reason why he didn't bid that house is because he just didn't have time to get to it. Contractors are really busy. This is their busiest time of year, so. And we've been bombarding them with these. Owner occupied rehab grants, because we have more going on in other communities, but. We have seven houses that we're preparing to let out to bid, including that one. That puts us at twenty-eight houses total. We said we would do thirty, so I need two more applicants, if possible. And I may have a little money left over to do more. So if anybody knows of, you know, not just an elderly person or a disabled person, but someone that needs a roof. Furnace, AC, water heater, electrical repairs, anything like that, let me know, okay? Could be a parent or a grandparent, or just someone that's just down on their life right now, so. But if I can get you guys to approve those, and, and if you have any questions.
We've already discussed all these in the meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve the bids from the August eighteenth meeting. It was discussed. I'll say all the favor.
Thank you. You guys have any other questions or anything for me?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have any support, of course.
That's one thing. Garrett sent out the. Contract from EDI. And, well, they did their proposal back in May. The contract was just a proposal, wasn't really a contract, and you guys had discussed about doing this, but. After I spoke to Wesley, this is for an annual contract, and we're eight months in, and they haven't done any of these. I don't know. How you know that it was this.
But it's not signed.
No, he just came up to.
They can say effective today. One year from today.
Maybe so, or even to effective today, through.
Yeah, the end of the year.
I guess I'm confused.
They didn't do any spring.
They didn't do any.
Just breakdowns, all they did.
So what was the effective date on the one that you originally had?
The May. That was from May fifth, this proposal was.
So our contracts for twenty-four was from May of twenty-four to May of twenty-five? And you're saying that from May of twenty-four to now, they haven't done any of that?
Yeah, there was no contract.
Contract. There was never really a contract.
But it's made of August, and made of September is different from May of May. I'm a little confused what you're trying to say.
The contract was over in May. We got bids out in May. It was ordered to bid. We didn't have no contract other than what he, he wrote up.
But they haven't done anything.
Other than the.
Since May.
Well. He didn't break down.
Oh, I, I, I understand what you're saying now.
So like, like our spring. Spring. PMs didn't get done because they didn't have a contract. We didn't have a contract. So now we'll be starting the fall. We go from fall to fall, twenty-four and twenty-five, or twenty-five and twenty-six? May of twenty-six, it'll be up, I assume, that's what we'll do.
You can draft it out. We can save one year from today.
Really?
What's the difference in the spring and the fall PMs? Nothing? Nothing?
Heating, cooling versus, or the cooling versus the heating? It really should be January, January. In order to do that, we'd have to, we could do here in a half. We wanted to go for a year and a half, and the price would change.
Total price is $20,304, $5,076.
Do I plan out? Really should be January to January, so you get a.
I mean, it's not, the contract isn't.
You got, well, you got the same line a little bit each year.
Before we sign it.
I mean, that's, I guess the bottom line. From a cooling perspective, we're pretty much through the season. So I mean, they're going to do them again. If we enter into the contract now, that we're still going to do the fall PMs, they're going to do the cooling or spring PMs prior to the new season starting, so I don't personally see a.
Things we claim to go with place here.
Yeah, we have to go in.
What day do you want to?
I mean, it's your discretion.
It's all yours, it's blank, so.
Do, yeah, it's your discretion. Do you want to put it a year from today? Or do you want to do it from now until January? Or you can do now until next January?
The assignment.
But the price for 12 months worth of service.
But we ask for one year. I would say, just if you got a quote for a year, do it for a year. And then we can talk to them with a little bit of advance and see.
And if we want to, if we want to get it on the next calendar year cycle, then the next contract, we can request them to make it.
January.
14 months, 16 months, whatever that was.
So we need a motion to approve the EDI contract effective today?
Yep.
Motion to approve contract for EDI rented maintenance.
Any amount of $20,304, oh, seconds?
Yeah, what was the email? AR something? That was discussing some money that had to be shuffled, shuffled around in the cables.
Arcbook, that was.
Yeah, Arcbook, okay. Was that anything that we had to do?
Well, Jamie had brought it up last meeting, you know, and it was put into the Morphil Binkton account. And that's the most everything it really should have. I thought that I could put it back into the archive, but after I spoke to state board of councils, I cannot put it back in there because everything had to be allocated at the end of '24. Even though it doesn't have to be spent until '26. We can't do an appropriation, so she suggested to, well, you can all show me what they suggested this, maybe in that account, or maybe put it into a different account from Morphil Binkton. That's up to you guys.
Well, wouldn't it go back to Morphil Binkton that had already been allocated? So is this a refund?
I mean, it's.
If you put it, pull it out, put it back in.
It's in there, I haven't moved anything, that's where 124 there.
All back to Arpo.
No, I did not.
If state board of council is okay with, just leave it in there, then it'll.
Saying Morphil, it's in the highway fund.
It was in the highway fund, I recognize, right?
You've already moved it out of highway.
No, I have not moved it at all.
Yeah, there's 140,000 loans that.
But, so we can't move it to Arpo. But if the state board of council says we can move it to Morphil Binkton, then we'll just use it to move it to Morphil Binkton. We'll use it to pay the 80s, some valves in there is not covered by home insecurity projects.
And then I've got a mental block on that. What about the 143,000? That we've talked.
Rainy day?
Yeah.
You drew up ordinance and.
You can now use it.
You can use it.
For whatever. Yes, now it's a traditional rainy day. So we kind of conflate here, because we have the casino fund with that. This is an actual traditional rainy day fund. We just needed an actual ordinance to be able to use it.
Amy, did you get the email from Kyle? What we had to say to the state?
Yeah.
He just texted me one of those, we've taken care of that. I don't know how soon that has to be done.
You're taking care of it, right?
Yeah, they just need a letter stating.
That you will be the person responsible for the maintenance.
Yeah.
What, what did we find out on the B situation? Got business log from EDI.
Did you have another card?
Yeah. Yeah, I have got it. We'll see.
I've got one thing for you also.
So we, on our asset management, we paid for, for turning to LTAP, we're saying to have our updates on, you know, these compounds, which is $3,000.
They're not in here, bud?
Yeah.
To your guys, I stopped and was talking to them today.
Yeah.
They asked me if they could get ready. I would think since the sheriff department, SCR is getting all new radios, can we not just use their radios?
Maybe, I don't know.
Look into that, I don't know. They seem adamant that it would help them a lot in certain situations.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think a lot of our trouble stems back to the towers on our back. Because we got.
That fell down, or?
So the only two. Because we had the radio guy, and right there at the end of last year, he checked all the radios, they were showing, that's good. But we can't get out, we have to place, we go and stuff.
Yeah, but didn't Tom just got a bunch of new equipment?
Yeah, the thing about this stuff is.
They're on the 800s though, right? You're not on the.
The new stuff is now, yeah, we're not on 800s. Yeah, I agree, it would be something very helpful.
Or if you give it Tom and or Brian, because I know Sheriff's got all these variations as well. They must be open source. I would love his own, I don't know if that really. And the others, yours probably aren't a lot of them.
So we got a few handhelds, but we got CBs and all of the equipment here. We're close. But even like, even only put in new radios, it's the same way, it'll work in certain areas. Like you can go down to Madison, Jeffersonville and talk to this response. But you get down in near, where we're close, it'll work. But I agree, it's something to see.
Well, if we can, if we can get radios from them and it serves the purpose that we need, that's what we should do.
I'll check.
I don't think we want to buy the new 800s, so they're, they don't want to buy them. Probably want to buy them, I'm not sure we can, because they're pretty expensive.
I'll check into it.
I think John Paul has something that we need to address tonight. About the stadium ID.
So what we've got going on is the federal government's got what they call their system for award management. We've got to re-register with. This is, this is not just money you get from the federal government, it's something that originates with the federal government. So it's also OKRA road funding, all the ready money. For some reason, we can't prove to their satisfaction that Switzerland County exists. And part of the problem is they'll give you certain documents that you can validate with, and all, none of ours just say Switzerland County. They either say Switzerland County treasurer, or Switzerland County auditor, or if it's a utility bill, it goes to whatever building it's with. And we've been going around and around with them for a while, and we're actually expired right now, but they consider it in process until they reject it. So we're trying to keep this, this round alive, if we can. The, one of the things they'll take is an action of government. So all this is, is a resolution from the county commissioner saying the name of the organization of Switzerland County, and this is our address. And then basically, we don't know if it's going to work or not, but it's, that's, they said they would take this.
There was a question.
It's, it's the federal government, basically. They set this up about, oh, it's probably been 10 years ago, but it gets more complicated every year. They, they're trying to make sure, because they wire money to places now, so they want to make sure they're wiring them to legitimate places, but they make you renew every year.
You get, yeah, I talked to them before, and I think you tried something similar with council.
Yeah, we were, because the council meeting was coming up last week, and we're trying to get something with them. Commissioners are the more appropriate body to be doing this, and like I said, we don't know if they're going to buy it anyway. But I talked to the Association of Counties to see if anybody else was having this problem. And a lot of places are just putting Switzerland County commissioners on there as they're, because they have documents that have that on top. We couldn't get anything they would take for that either. We sent them a set of minutes, that wasn't, that wasn't, they wouldn't take that. And it's, it's been, we haven't had this much trouble in a year before.
We also use this as well.
But I mean, basically, it's, you know, our resolution of the commissioners is an official government action. So we think, you know, if, if we just pass something saying who we are and where we're at, maybe they'll accept that as a documentation.
So what do you, what do you need from us?
Just an approval of this resolution. And then while Gail signs it, and I'll notarize it and send it to them in the morning. And we're also going to attach a W9 and a few other things, so they, here's our tax ID number, here's, here's. But they don't, they won't take any of that as legitimate until they get, until they satisfy. You would think so, yeah. And I think a lot of this depends on who you get. I've gotten on the phone with people before and gotten somebody who would push it through, but this time we haven't had any luck.
You're fine with it. It's going to be 0902, 2025, or what's the resolution number?
Although I left that blank, because I figured Gail would have to.
It's going to be 92, it will be approved.
I'll make a resolution to approve. Yeah. Motion to approve resolution 92-2025-6. All in favor? Aye.
Well, thanks, guys. I just need Joe and Gail to sign the same copy, and I'll take care of the rest. And actually, Gail, I'll have to, I'll bring that over so you can put it on Letterhead tomorrow, the cover letter for that.
You want me to sign here?
Yeah, yeah. Good deal, thanks, guys.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? It's not necessarily hard to do, but the formal process is a decision.